Take one.
Thank you all for coming. My name is Sammy Young, the first president of the Chamber of Commerce. And we would like at this time to ask the candidates to step forward and say your prayers. And then we're going to turn it over to our participants. Please take your seat.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the candidate forum for the May 3rd elections in the council election. This event is being sponsored by the Dublin Chamber of Commerce with assistance by the Dublin Citizen. We want to thank the Chamber for helping organize this event and First National Labor for providing the stations for us to use. On the ballot for May 3rd election are three candidates in place one, Bokabala, Ongi Mofawala, and Patrick Sallier, incumbent Barry Turbley is running on for place three, and incumbent Sammy Morris facing Dalton Harris for place five. A free voter's guide is available on dublancitizen.com when candidate reviews and election information in contested races. I'm Paul Nadeh, Citizens managing area manager at this monitor. My wife and I are on the dinner committee, we keep in touch with the events. Candidates will be given three minutes to introduce themselves and then a series of questions will be asked of all candidates and attendees. Audience members may also make questions for the candidates who have provided note cards and pens on the other side of the room. Candidates will have 90 seconds to respond to each question. If the speaker hits their time limit, it will be announced and they will have 10 seconds to finish their thought. Yes, everyone please sign off your cell phones and remain in place so that all may hear. Just re- just re- announcing that, so four minutes, that starting off, we're going to allow introductions for the three minutes, and then afterwards, we're going to have questions that give you all 10 seconds to respond. Okay, let me see if I can time. Okay, so, let's start with our board of place five and candidate here in sentence.
My name is Dalton Harris. We got him about 2019, I think, a couple years ago from a little small town, very small. First question that everybody asked is, why can't we get a car? It's beautiful out there. It's true, from afar, you put about 10 minutes and negative 10.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
So you spent about 10 minutes and negative 10 in White Pride, Texas, looks beautiful. Made it down to Texas and been in the process of building a small business down here and working as a little time during the winter. Dublin has been very good for my family, it's been very beautiful year since I've seen green growth all year round. So, I decided to run for city council after seeing, I got to witness firsthand at work how small towns interact and when they don't have their problems, they want to keep the soul of the community and also be willing to grow to a point where we can embrace the local prosperity. It's very tempting, like, my own experience is that, in our time in northern Wyoming, most folks went up north to Montana because there was no sales tax. So our local community was starting with local prosperity due to no local options of the road funds, options to shop by the road funds, certain local needs. So it was that, that made me want to, very interested in supporting the local economy of Dublin. And it looks like a lot of the folks who would say my stuff, like, I've changed, got the cars and revitalized Dublin, that sounds great, there's a lot of, you drive through Dublin, you can see a lot, tons of potential. We are a satellite town off of Stevieville, which means that a lot of folks will live here and work in Stevieville. So that means we need to, or actually, it gives us the window of opportunity to have local economic development, suit the needs of residents that live here, instead of making them go to Stevieville and the prosperity goes to them. And so that, that was my, that, that would be the goal that I focused on as a councilperson. So, and that's, and, yeah, sorry.
Speaking of X.
All right, well, good evening, how's everybody doing today?
Great.
So good to be here, good to see everybody. Privileged to have this opportunity to share our vision for Dublin. So I'm Bokabala, I'm running for city council, seat one here, and I'd be honored to receive your support, able to go to work for you. I may not originally be from Dublin, although our TV's checking on that, just kidding. But I got here as fast as I could, actually, I got to the south as fast as I could in my first job. My graduation from college was in Mississippi, and I had the opportunity to work for Governor Haley Barber at the time, who had been the chairman of the Republican National Committee, big tent Republican who has since supported Donald Trump. And, you know, I was coming down after eight years in Massachusetts, and I sure thought I knew a lot. I remember the conversation with Henry Barber, the campaign manager, who told me, I'm going to go door to door in rural Mississippi, talking to voters, hearing their concerns. And I said, no problem. And six, seven hours later, I came back, I said, Henry, you know, I didn't know the half of what I thought I did. And I wasn't a Christian at the time, I probably was tucked up. And since then, building on my government degree, I've been passionate about listening, learning more about economic development, politics, and government that I get to teach at Tarleton currently, that I've taught in other places. And I'm running because I believe we can make Dublin great again, and in this moment, we can do better. Our taxes are way too high, there is no reason that Stevieville should have a 37 cents for $100 of property valuation while we're 68 or 69 to wait until we address that. It's through smart economic development that's right for our community. I haven't been able to get the details of turf zones and PUD zones and anything else that we want to talk about. We need an industrial park, those don't have to be huge, you can have a hundred acre industrial park, whether that's along Highway 377 or by the airport. You know, say what you will about his tweets, the policies that Donald Trump is currently pursuing, in my opinion, will likely result in some businesses coming back to the U.S. So we should have it right here in Dublin, in this part of the state. And finally, we'll just say I'm worried about property values because we do have some lead-up properties. And when the owners of those homes are ready for them to be moved out of town, Stevieville has a dump, we do not. So we enjoy meeting with the city manager of Stevieville, Stephen King, to talk about the possibility of working out some kind of deal, you know, to get one home from Dublin, Stevieville dump is about $6,000, but what if over the next five to seven years, we were able to move 50 to 75 homes over there? Sounds like Jason King is open to a deal sometime, he's Steve Bell, Cameron Gray, our fantastic city manager here. And so, working together, we want to make Dublin great again. Thanks so much.
Hi, my name is Homi, you all are usually probably have known, but my wife and I entered here 2007, 2008, just been about 17 years last year, and we are doing this small community based on the social model. So, apart from that, the reason I wanted to stand for this place one is, I thought we had some place where we could change my name, and we needed to have more contact with the public, which, I think more people need to be informed about what's going on. And of course, I think our public options are Facebook, Instagram, I think we need to focus more on that, so more people look at the current issues that are here, that government is facing, and that way we can have more people join us and speak up, so that was the reasons I wanted to stand for it. And also, I don't think anybody else was standing for this place, I think the one, maybe I should step up. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. I think Patrick Sallier, all over here in Dublin, have to make, for the few most of the last, I think, quiet, I want to run for the city council, because, just try to have, difference between the two, not too much of a difference, same thing, you get your, you think, think about, if maybe, I can remember, make the larger, I remember in Dublin, I had a lot more little businesses, little businesses, I worked a lot of many companies, it wasn't crazy. I think what they do in Dublin, and, yeah, they, they, I can try to do something, bring them back, get down, down, get my, get it down my life, I know it will fall out of my hands right now. I, Dublin, I went there four years ago, got up, figured out, I do like, the deal that I have over here is, I can't. Anyway, anyway, I only got a lot of them that fights for every, that person. Yeah, I'm stuck in my, and, yeah, yeah, more to, I don't know, my, that's all, that was, like.
No, we're all just very talking birds, we have words. All right, excuse me. Dustin?
Is that?
Okay.
You think you can offer help to our parents, the way you're doing?
Sure. Okay, I don't mind if everybody has a more natural, I have a serious question here, everybody's sitting in chairs, ask them, everybody has a nice second stand to look first to the, if you can. Okay, starting off, since the mic's up, do you currently hold any positions or boards on or, you know, on the boards or committees within Dublin? If yes, please testify.
And so I'm honored to serve on the property zoning commission, was appointed by, like, lately here, and to hear about interesting possibilities, companies that potentially are moving in, as well as people who would like to see the kind of property they have reclassified, to be able to do different things with it. I think zoning is absolutely essential, the kind of economic development strategy you may or may not adopt. So I serve on that board, I've been privileged to get to do some volunteering around town, pitching in with reconstruction of dilapidated homes, and that is currently sent to my phone.
Patrick, do you currently hold any positions on boards or committees within Dublin?
No.
Okay.
Not all right. Okay. But I did give a shout out to the management to Revitalize Dublin, which, I haven't, I haven't, I haven't, I haven't personally so far, but.
We're right here for you.
Okay. So it was my intention, I, I agree though, I think there's a lot of awards in zoning, between business, commercial, residential, and I, in a small town, you have a lot of room names between zoning, some properties will have a house on them and shop, and some strictly commercial or residential, one or the other, you can't mix those two, and that tends to harm some of that sense, like, I do want to, I do want to keep a careful eye on what kind of properties are zoning what, and to be best representative of the good, the good of the community, not, not strictly arbitrary, also, this, this has a beautiful house on it, but also shop, it's a commercial, that a voluntary, that a house, we have a, you know, it would be great to have a lot of nice houses in Dublin, dilapidated rents are a part of that, so, so, like I said, I would like to give a happy review to Revitalize Dublin.
How's your call, did you get municipal boards, or did you also get?
Just maybe more of your organizations.
Okay, I, for a second, after that. Just in the interest of full disclosure, I do also have the privilege of serving on board of Revitalize Dublin, so I've learned a lot, and I appreciate your trust, I've had the chance to get, have some awesome people coming through to talk to us, Mayor Duxton, we've got councilmember Steven Ogeral Cook coming to talk about economic development, and we're just, I'm grateful to them, I enjoyed the awesome conversations, so give them a shout.
Art, we could just forehand, or go back to the board? Okay. When the events are in Dublin, do you tend to show support for the community? What was the last event you attended?
The last event that I attended with our family was put on by the Chamber, and I remember, we all got to eat some delicious food and see some amazing artists and campaign a little bit. So there's also the Hispanic heritage events that we've had the chance to go to. And we've been here for two years, as I mentioned, I got here as fast as I could in 2022, so I think, I appreciate that you bring up events, because I think they're not only part of the quality of life of a community, but they attract tourism, which, you know, folks express dissatisfaction with our downtown, I think our museums are amazing, and I think the events should also be seen as part of economic development, let's judge.
Patrick.
Ooh, things like that. Yeah, I mean, I didn't know that much time, usually, most of them are perfect days, but sometimes I get sad, you know, I'm just, I'm, like, playing tennis, like this, I'm pretty long, so, they do it right here. Nine and four, nine and four. Yeah, they're really good, you know, I was like, I'm going to, I'm, I don't know. I'll remember my dad's.
I know, I know, you're not saying, say, Patrick, say that.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I, 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 I.
Do you listen to the channel?
I haven't been active much lately, many years ago I walked, and, you know, Dublin happens, been much of a, lately.
Well, I have the privilege to go a couple times to the charity car show downtown, where they showcase plastic cars and motorcycles, and it's always a great turnout, you have to sit in the really hot sun, it's worth it for cars, and you see how the sun reflects out the beautiful paint. My, part of the family runs a custom car show in town, so it's always nice to, to support that, and to see what folks, you know, dust off their garage, and go out downtown Dublin, right next to the bombing factory right there, behind the police station, so it's a huge turnout, especially from the size of the town, it's, it's almost disproportionate, so it's nice to see businesses that care about that, and, and I would like to go or be a part of more opportunities like that.
Would you be comfortable, if you wanted to be, or?
Sure.
When was the last time you volunteered, and how many times in the past year have you volunteered?
Are you watching too? It's a very interesting question, because volunteering for the community has been sort of, I don't think that's a way to come on. Right. I'll be completely frank, I have not locally volunteered for a very long time. I'm going to have to give a shout out to old Pepe over here, that, yeah, I work six days a week, definitely a long, long time, but, having said that, and having watched citizens, had to drive by, people to be pulled, trapped, playing up, I have seen that, it would be great to be more a part of that, it would be great to promote, events like that, it would be great to, you know, like I said, it would be great to be a greater part of that.
I have done a lot of volunteering in the past, I did, I write company websites and stuff, but it's been a few years now, lately, again, life, not much lately, and hoping to get back.
You don't go to my, I, I, I.
You know, I'm also my manager, I just wanted to clarify that. Just kidding, so it's been really great to get to volunteer with Revitalize Dublin and work on dilapidated homes, I've learned a lot, enjoyed talking to people, and just seeing the turnout, it's pretty inspiring. I'm a proud member of the Lions Club, I'm a DQ every Tuesdays at Rosemary, you see me there, I think that's, that's true. And we have a special outreach to kids who are struggling with different kinds of disabilities, who may be eye glasses, so it's been a great team to participate in that. And then finally, we mentioned, our family has gotten into sharing our home, sometimes renting, sometimes a different kind of situation, which we see as a ministry, so we've, in talking to Steve Hightower and others, sometimes had people come into our home who are not paying for months, we recognize, it's, it's a tough time economically for many people, and we do need affordable housing, and we kind of see opening our home to different folks as, as part of our overall service ministry.
Will you give the next one, Chris?
I think so.
Okay. Have you attended the city council meetings in the past? If so, how?
Yes, I kind of make a habit of attending on a monthly basis, so I appreciate Sammy Morris' insights and Darren Turbley, and, I mean, everybody just, I have felt like in the last few months, is, in thinking out loud, what's the policy for our community to have, and it's great, and I look forward to those, to those meetings.
Patrick.
Yeah, I tell you one, there was like, that, that, that one about the programs?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that one. There's one more, I want to, I didn't look at before that, I looked like a year or two before that, no way, never met that before, it was only to be, middle, because the neighbor that funky house, it's there, you're not a store owner?
So, the plan is over.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Slow connection.
Just that one.
Okay.
I have a test for the morning, I've got the last two, we have a meeting, but often, due to the issues that are currently there, more than a lot, maybe six months.
Well, I personally know, but I do appreciate it, like, behind the camera, because I was able to virtually attend the council meeting over, the council was trying to decide whether to let, to zone the area, to let the semi-nineteen mobile homes be there, and I was a little bit to do with some sketching stuff going on, and some scams that they went through. I agree with Phil, that there does need to be housing that is affordable, not necessarily affordable housing, I guess the difference in my mind is, you don't necessarily want to trap low-income individuals in a trailer park, where it's a financial trap, if you have the depreciated asset that is the trailer, on rented ground, which means that in two to five years, if you want to move on, you're kind of stuck there, unless you have a huge out-of-cost. So I think opportunities like that are tempting in the community, where we see like potential growth, huge passive income, and tax dollars, but we need to be very careful about how we receive with those matters, so that it's good for the overall health of the community, not just a couple of people. I think people approach things in good faith, and I think a lot of people want to see the community grow, I just think we need to approach things in a smarter, intelligent way, that don't trap low-income folks who need that, thousands, in that affordable housing, so they can sell their house at appreciated, at increased value, and, yeah, keep the pressure on that.
Okay. You come from the first, uh, first? How are you prepared, uh, when are you prepared to do the health brain growth and development stuff?
Well, partially, I think your answer was making sure we take that correct amount of opportunities. I know the city has recently engaged in the first REUSE program, we have applied for it, and that's a Texas program, attached to a REUSE program, that lets, you can use it around Texas, particularly small towns, but technically, you can't decide that, they, they want to preserve that historical value of downtowns, while it's not a game, see everybody resource that will be grown in downtown. So I, I believe that Dublin has already taken a first step as a client to that, so I would like to continue that going forward. Evidently, they provide education to a particular council member to go to quarterly educational seminars, I suppose, there are, and I would like to proceed forward with that, and if it does indeed benefit Dublin downtown and around, I would like to take the next step, which is a ministry program. And that's, it's, it's a little more coordinated, and if it does benefit Dublin, I would like to proceed with programs like that.
I think, like you said, mainly Dublin, find a life up and get small businesses in, and, you know, helping them grow by giving them some kind of breaks, I don't understand tax breaks, and I could be, other, but some people, small businesses are more than to come, and less regulation, where they can actually get started. Sometimes our regulations still fall, because we just can't look a bigger word, it's just too much for them, and want them, especially when they're starting up, they don't know much, but they find the rest, and then there is more, I know you can see a lot of that, you know, both of the officials can really, you know, do something. I think small businesses is where it is right now, getting a big manufacturing or some kind of thing is maybe more the future, but I think supporting local businesses is probably the most, many people may be living in Dublin, but don't really support small businesses in Dublin. I, I subtract it as much shopping online locally, just because I'm here, and that's what we should do.
Patrick.
I gotta agree with them today, you know, we gotta get some more small businesses going, downtown, you know, I don't know, affect, you know.
Ask where you're gonna put those small businesses.
Make some, make, get some, you know, like, first year, first two years, get more.
Where, where you're gonna go?
Where you're gonna, come back on this, 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 you know, make it a little bit easier, and, I think that, I think, make that happen.
And while I'm glad you asked, I think there's a number of tools that we would have at our disposal, and let me mention three right off the bat, that would be great for small business, with Stevieville and parts of Texas can be used, and so, my 13-year-old daughter right, as we were talking about these, and asked today, and initiated this, they're called TURFs, PUDs, and PIDS. What are those acronyms to stand for? TURFs is a tax increment reinvestment zone, the PUDs is a public contributory development zone, and the PIDS is a public investment development zone. Stevieville can't get enough of the TURFs, so there's 13 of them, as you know, you can direct me, and Stevieville, basically how it works is not a tax involvement, I appreciate Mayor Gray's point that lowering taxes for businesses that we want to invite in can work, or we should try to do more of it, but it's not always going to work. TURFs is different, it's not a tax break, and it relies on the extension between general and specific revenue, so here's what it might look like for us, let's say we designate a part of Dublin as a TURFs zone, draw the lines on the map, what that means is, any property tax, any other revenue that's generated from within that zone, doesn't go into the general fund of the city, gets pumped back into and reinvested into the TURFs, it works beautifully. If we want to handle sidewalks, we use the. reinvested into the TURFs. It works beautifully. If we want to handle sidewalks, we use the PUDs, Public Utility Development Zone. With the PIDS, we can coordinate a little more with Texas government and actually the federal reverence of some of our contacts will be helpful. But any more thoughts that we can share with thanks. That's just a start.
Okay. Um, you, you want to start with the next one?
Sure.
How would you invest in urban libraries?
You know, I think our library is critical and I really appreciate you bringing it up. It's beautiful. We can see kids there, not just reading and stimulating their intellects, but sometimes, you know, is the library also a safe place for them to go? My guess is that's absolutely true. And so I'm going to bring everything back on some level to the right kind of economic growth. Because we have more revenue coming in, we should prioritize investments into the library. I think that, you know, we were talking with Mayor David the other day about leveraging these more contacts and reaching out directly to families who might be interested in investing in Dublin. So there's a way to do that. There's a way not to do that. As I've gone through tough personal experiences, we were able to get folks like Sid Miller and Gunner to Charlton. So when you're reaching out, asking for money, you'll probably know that's not as comfortable. There's a way to phrase that and know. There's a way to introduce yourself. Sometimes it's better to go in person, but reaching out to people who might be willing to invest, I think, we need a combination of public, private strategy. We need to raise awareness, like targeted at the toys and the newspaper. Our library is critical. It's, it's a crucial resource, uh, and we should invest in it.
Patrick?
I think there's, uh, one thing I'd like to say, Mr. Deven, uh, Zolos does a magnificent job there with the libraries. And I remember when I worked for the city, I was, uh, I think Marlowe, the one that was in the seven, we did that walkie-talkie around there on the inside. I mean, it's kind of a rerun, but I just put on that little bit of business on. And, uh, we did a lot of work and stuff there too. But back to all, even more perfect to the question. Yeah, it's important. It's mighty important. And that kind of, I remember that bike, I remember the old dark ass, I remember the old, you know, the thought. You remember? Yeah. I remember, oh, that place, that was around. Just that. But then I had my thing and I need to keep it up. And, uh, both guys, I remember the literature upon about the slave building. See, that was a little while ago. Somebody down there breaking a brick off in the night. I remember I had no one up. I wasn't old enough. You know, with, with, you know, always the first I thought.
Uh, kids love libraries. They love to read, like expansive horizons. And I think more technology related kids or project wise, they would learn a much more like a team building, more of the computer ID, not just library for books. Books is very important. Also other methods. As for funding, yeah, mainly it's probably fundraisers or companies to make, I don't know, like maybe digital computers or tablets, which they can use for certain projects. And I think projects, you know, out there, kids can gather together and they can explore that, right? Things that they may never have thought of. Okay, this is something I love robotics, AI. These kids have been really good because nowadays kids are so smart. And, you know, if they, they already are on the computers all day and having someone be guiding them, I can hope you do that.
I would quite agree with that point that if we keep funding the libraries, it's very tempting in some amount to keep it exclusively bookshelves, which has, it's very important. But if it is for kids and it needs to be set in place, then it does need to be partially self-run through not just all the communities that it, so it needs to be partially self-run through, uh, any kind of charity events, sales, anything like that. I would also agree that technology that is useful to kids today, having a tablet and a phone, there's some double F for kids, but having said that, is necessary for a lot of careers going forward. You can't, you can't keep that from them as long as you're not, like, you don't need that knowledge. They need experience with it to get into the workplace, whether it's a boring government job, offensive, or to somebody who, you know, ain't much to do designing a computer, it needs to be at least some preliminary resource in the library if the intent is for education and for development of the younger population.
You comfortable starting with the next one, Patrick? You got to call it my attention, but maybe let people, you, you get a chance to start first. Uh, where do you see Dublin in the next two years?
Two years? Well, uh, down there in front of the vine, you want to follow my street, you're a lot better. Doggone bitches downtown, maybe they'll be pretty damn concerned by you. I can remember back and forth with people. Yeah. I don't know who they got you want to take them out, but they just like things. Yeah. The way they do it now, should be pretty good deal on that. Um, what else? Let's see. I don't know. What do you think, Paul?
I'm not a grandpa.
Hey, I got a wish for the next two years. My wish is to get that turn and go build the switch yard about five miles that way down the track and turn back into a railroad crossing. Not a railroad stopping dropping food. That's a wish. I don't actually weigh about all these.
You know, uh, go ahead and go back for that.
Uh, for the next two years, I guess there's a lot of construction. Packard Street is only down for most of two years. So I think infrastructure is the next step that we need to say since Packard Street is getting done and, uh, city needs to make sure our infrastructure at this point gets to par. That's getting done. So it makes you look like, I would say it's more like a foundation, where you lay the foundation for better infrastructure for the city. And once that is, um, you know, businesses built, infrastructure is there, I think next year, I think it's more building Dublin up.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's an excellent way to start. Uh, I would like to address a question. I mentioned that Dublin is a little bit of a satellite community, which by not being a smaller community outside the edge of a super growing community, which is Stevensville, which means a lot of folks are really going to own prices there, uh, sit down, take a drink and then have a go to Dublin and look at it. And there's a lot, there's tons of opportunity in Dublin. So particularly for residential buildings, if we, we do need to focus on research before we get too carried away with planning and doing new commercial projects because the guys like me, they have to bury their wires on the ground, the plumbers have to bury their pipes on the ground, the gas lines, et cetera. We got to make sure we focus on all this, the, the non-glorious stuff first before we can get the huge businesses in. But in the next two years, I see giant opportunity for residential expansion. So whether we go downtown and find a kind of dilapidated house, have an inkling on it, or we go to dilapidated, red, no, we make it easy and whether we provide incentive or we just stay out of the way for investors, the homeowners wanting to the area to build their own building, um, within reason. We don't want to slap, you know, a camper show right there and call it home, but we do want some of the, without little to no aircraft regulation to be able to build their own building.
Um, I, uh, uh. All right, let me start with something slightly different. I'm obviously pro economic development, but done in the right way. But there's other things we need to support seniors, in my opinion. So Stevensville has a senior center. Deleone has a place where older folks are able to go and play the bingo game and benefits. I think we should at the very least start work on a senior center of some kind. I also think with the legislation that appears to have passed, government has its support. So the fact that it's especially important at this time, as many rural schools transition that were there for our public schools and our public school teachers. And I think all of that is critically important and needs to stay part of the conversation in terms of economic development. I think I probably agree with what's been said on this panel. Let me make a suggestion in addition, which is, in my opinion, we should build on the comprehensive economic development plan that we have. When we compare ours to that of Haiko, Hamilton, and Tamanche, which is that are flourishing. I mean, Haiko is just unbelievable downtown. You compare very comprehensive economic developer plan to ours, you're talking about parking, you're talking about zoning. You address the parking situation downtown. I think we need to ask how is it that eighteen-wheelers sometimes are going fifty, sixty miles per hour down Bathurst Street? We need to take a look at our water, uh, if I can have to increase , um, well, so all the other.
Um, how would you prioritize? What attributes or qualifications do you have that promote that?
I would say a little bit of mine. I don't know how to jump to conclusions, but like, wait, my options before we make a decision and not be in a rush. Many times I've seen a lot of decisions that just be rushed. I think we should slow it down, make sure we have all the facts before we vote on something, decide what needs to be done. I think sometimes they're just jumping again just because think, okay, yeah, we need to do this. But yes, we do need to do it, but we don't need to do it the right way. I mean, having a more cautious approach is what I would focus on.
Okay. Paul?
Sure. I think that two, two of the things I would kind of mind when I ask that question would be, the first thing I think is if rushing to conclusions, like you said, only that was a very good selling, by that, but for what I have at my first, that would be to try and give the best base on a, a decision that comes to council. I would obviously, if I, I'm going to disagree with it, I would try to go, okay, why would folks want to do this? What is the best case for value and why don't we disagree with it? And the second thing is which I think, and that's been my approach to things, no matter what happens, future, it's everything that's going to be involved in construction of some kind of help. And I think, um, I've been looking for some trade for the last ten, four years, uh, as an official, I've seen projects start to finish, other than part of tenant improvements, other part of commercial shops. So I have basically a close insight to how construction projects progress, that all that to say, we can't be sign papers and improve the budget and just kind of hopefully somebody else handles it correctly because we, you know, maybe we don't have a lot of familiar processes of construction. So that, that's a good insight to have before the project starts. So you know, it sounds great on paper, but will it work out in fact? Will it work out in the, in the time you have, even though it's great for a three-year, but it's not a project. That's what I would say.
Over to Paul. We're just going to concentrate on the trade more than you.
Yes. So welcome, John. Some questions about attributes or qualifications? Yeah. So I've had the opportunity to work in government and politics. I mentioned my first job, I graduated well, was working for Governor Andy Barber in Mississippi. I have interned in the White House and I love teaching politics and government, sometimes debating, uh, sometimes for the most part I agree with students at Charlton. So I just, I feel this is what makes me tick. One thing about what Bo knows, I do know a little bit about different political issues and zoning and some of these topics where we can take it deep. Bo also knows what he doesn't know. So my commitment to you this evening would be I will always ask if I don't know, we have networks in place, people we can consult with, uh, and seek your advice. And I think, in my opinion, that's potentially a welcome attribute in government these days.
Okay.
I have to use qualifications on the wall. I think very well. But I know the council said, uh, you can hear, so it's a degree. Uh, I have a little bit of a professional spirit in my mind. I'm not afraid to roll up, we work at the level of reason. Uh. This one, check the views. I don't really get it. I've got, I've got a strong desire to see that sort of move on, move it. That guy, man.
Okay. Next one, Ryan. It's a mountain. Okay. New state works. No promises. Uh, how would you prioritize growth in business potential when hearing proposals from business owners, sporting organizations, et cetera?
So one of the most important things in my opinion that government can do is stay out of the way. I mean, there, there's a very large temptation to have a new government program, using one that I agree with, I do do it for Red State. But for the most part, it's government needs to get out of the way with information. Some pre-solidary agreements, but for the most part, it's not up to the government, local government, to decide when there's a loose in businesses. Um, essentially, anybody who wants to open a business that fits the community should be given a green light and minimal red tape. Um, we have to make sure, obviously, infrastructure, uh, as previously, infrastructure that's solid for other project can't have a giant place that has not enough power for water or drainage, et cetera. But I can say that I think giving a green light, making it easy for capital to come to Dublin, making it easy for outside investors to put their money in Dublin, and making it easy for local citizens to want to spend their money on Dublin in a way that will contribute to the community.
Uh, I, I would propose.
Yeah, thanks so much. I think in all of the above strategy would be advisable. So we do want to, I think, invite businesses in using TURFs, PUDs, and PIDS zones. Make it as beneficial for our building businesses to do come in as possible. And then I think we should seek out those athletic events and sporting events that are good for our community and that helps economically. We have to look, uh, too far. I had the privilege of speaking with Rick Taylor the other day. You know, we have a rich relative heritage here, obviously, that is, you know, on display, uh, in one of our wonderful museums. And that's not just a question, in my opinion, of compelling historical displays. It's also a tremendous economic development opportunity. I mean, how many people came into the Culver Hall back in the forties and fifties? I have different numbers, but fifty, sixty thousand. I may not have the infrastructure, like I said, but in the city park, we'd have to invest a little bit, but we should be looking to rodeo events. I think Rick Taylor is as an exciting economic development opportunity. There's companies around here, we could reach out to blocks, PCA Rodeo, we have rodeo champions. So I, in my opinion, we do guide growth. It's not just the free market because it needs to be growth that's right for us and our community, but absolutely all of the above, no doubt about that.
Patrick, how do you prioritize growth in business potential?
Prioritize. I think you need to try, certainly trying to stay open.
Okay. Uh, if somebody's, if somebody's coming in to invest in this, how would she, uh, how would you make sure the growth in, uh, the business potential is being handled hard?
You can, you can play, you, like, yeah, we don't hurt you that much. Like the red tape, you're going to, you're just, yeah, we can cut down on red tape if possible.
If you like, like the, if you say that, yeah, because I'm maybe not, if you ever call up, it's not quite.
Okay. Solid, because this is.
Okay. Black people you mentioned. I think the main thing is, let's forget, everybody knows that, in addition to that, how subject magnetic story go through it, like, you know, City Council doesn't know everything. Have someone who really knows about that business. In general, you're better, what to say, feedback and say, okay, this, for this to be successful, here are the parameters. And does this person need it? If yes, then you should do whatever you can to facilitate it. And as we all have been saying, infrastructure should be able to support what that person is trying to do. So that is just very important. Take, for example, the big government which was going to come. Primary reason why it failed is there was no infrastructure in that particular area. You know, so it was bound to fail because it just wouldn't be able to take it. The same project, if it went in a different location, may happen successfully, only because it had a better infrastructure for that particular difference. So it's not like any business anywhere. It's location, location is critical. Make sure the location is right and the structure is there to support it.
Next question. Bo, first. Most questions. How would you handle water?
How would we handle water? Thank you, that's an excellent question. My, we need to handle it and just go down Patrick Street and talk about the residents and probably experienced it as well. It's one of those areas, we need to do better. I want to clarify, this is not an anti-Lake Proctor statement, but I think we do need to seriously consider at some point increasing well capacity. So it used to be easier in Dublin to put a well down. And we need to look at the interaction between water conservation districts, levels of city and county government. But right now, if you don't have three acres prohibiting people from just putting a well down, because I've talked to well owners, they're much more satisfied with the water they have than folks who are dealing with our, that their one option is our, our city water. There's also some agreements, some legal agreements we can look at. Dublin committed, I believe in the nineteen seventies, in a contract with De Leon to not have the ability to put down a zero-nutible well. So I was at that meeting in the nineteen seventies, I believe that there was coercion involved, just getting a phone call from a lawyer and it was clear that that was a joke, but maybe we should get out of whatever that contractual agreement is that De Leon is hanging over our heads to say, or the De Leon, the relevant districts were not allowed to put, I mean, this whole, we also need to look at our pipes, but there's, there's different options.
Patrick?
Water. Water. I thought we used to have a well back over here, right behind the old Seamus Citizen Center. I know there's still a well, at least a wellhead sticking up there by the water tower up there. I can't remember if it was something or another. That I can't hear my tongue. But got my boat that said, you know, you may need to look into, you know, bringing those back online, because ain't, ain't nobody very happy with Proctor. And I'm not Patrick Proctor, Ash Comanche down here, or De Leon Marston. But you talk to anybody around town, they're not happy with the water quality, and certain are not happy with the water price. If we can leave getting much of quality, then maybe they wouldn't be so mad at the price. And, you know, if somebody got anger two, three in town, I think, well, go get punished once a while, obviously, why not? You know, but that's my opinion.
I think a few years ago, we had that thing where if you didn't already have a well, they did not give you a permit to make one, put a new well. I distinctly remember that because we had a well a lot of people spent time on, and I missed the deadline, and they're like, okay, can't do it anymore. So, like, they, they all suggest, yes, alternatives are so superior, but yes, that one is a good man. Even the forty, MS team is doing a great job, but still, there's only so much even they can do. So water definitely is, infrastructure, one of the basic things. Unfortunately, everybody has to have a filter for all of our future water, but that's why you have to deal with this last year. That definitely is, I'm just.
Paul?
So, yes, I think they're down. Occasionally, you can pour yourself up water in a faucet, it smells a lot like a swimming pool, and you're like, why does it smell like that? And then you go out to Proctor, and you're like, okay, that's why this water is lovely. So it, it is an issue, but going forward, we would probably be more open to punching more wells. I mean, there is limitations around too. You can't have a well every hundred feet or something, just the science of wells and the, you know, like you said, you have a well, no problem, certainly not that. But if there was a large, say, West Stroud, we could give it, the city could, you know, make it very easy for them to punch their own well, you know, as opposed to hooking up to city water. And that would be an optional for larger uses of that, similar to, I think, the city park has pool. I mean, there'd be similar processes to that, so that way more can go to residential housing or houses that we would have.
So my neighbor Tex, he's got a lot of that. And when he built his home, you know, he had a great heart plan, getting a permit, he wanted to build a lies manufactured home, they didn't allow him at that, and this is probably ten years ago. And he had a well already in lies, a good one, and the city made him get city water. So, you know, there you go. Even though the owners want what we all like, they shouldn't have forced him, you know, since you're the city, have to have city water, so he had to pay it, run the line to his property. So I think some exceptions, you know, if someone already has a beautiful working well, you shouldn't have to force someone to get city water. Maybe that's why.
Yeah, but just in the name and air of fairness, somebody else has, was, was that similar? All right. How would you handle sidewalks?
Sidewalks? Sidewalks, I remember when they, the places, sidewalk down Patrick Street, was it two years ago? About two, three years ago? That, one on Black Jack, the ways of, South Black Jack. These Black Jack parks. I remember that. Sidewalks. They did a lot of good work, but there were some places that didn't actually do it. Down by Manufacturing and whatnot. Right, and they did, they did a few more. Some of them didn't quite drop out. And, no, we need to, definitely long way to go if we got that care. Because I don't know how long the side street can make sidewalks, I mean, that's a bit excessive. Definitely a long way to go to make, also access to all the, you know, sidewalks, you know, sidewalks, not a change, I hope, and food, you know, a little more than I can handle.
Go back to the jury.
Sidewalks, very important, especially for kids, and especially by us, there are no sidewalks. That is again, you can't find the same old type of infrastructure you don't have. So before we plan, mention, maybe you should worry about getting the roads done, make sure we have sidewalks, that kids have a better way to go to school and玩. You know, if I believe the sidewalk during bad weather, it's, it's really bad, it's cluttered, kids walking there of snow, ice, and it becomes a lot of that, at least still do. Even on some days, I mean, I think kids can slip fall, and then right there is traffic next to them. So I think sidewalks, especially in areas where kids are more prone to be in, should be a priority. And again, no project should go forward without making, new project should be a good one, unless, or without proper sidewalk on that, in that neighborhood. So if they want to build a new project, make sure you have proper sidewalks, handicapped accessible. And I think that's a very important thing, especially like I said, schools don't are too expensive.
Sidewalks are another one of those real main issues, I think, of like, just out of grants, I, I'm a reporter, so I don't know, probably, but it would seem to me that there's a lot of areas across the school double that would want to move upon our product. And what I wouldn't want to do, and what I would caution to stay away from, was doing the city ordinance that require a sidewalk if you do renovations on your house, or if you do any landscaping, simply because the house is too close to the curb, it's impactable, or there's some roads ended up, I think, on water tower, or it's a baby, and if you require the residents to pour their sidewalk, contribute to it, or in some way build it, or have taxpayer, maybe that is just a backup solution. Having said that, I would encourage businesses to have sidewalks, obviously, to have sidewalks, many things, and that's, that's the second part of sidewalks is that currently, the resident is responsible for making between their property and the city road. So essentially, everyone in town is responsible for maintaining city property adjacent to their house. And I can see it's probably cheaper for the city significantly, but it's also kind of like, well, A, some people either, again, they're requiring people to maintain property that is not theirs, and then there's also the, some people don't want to maintain it. So there's both these issues.
Just a point, just a point of clarification, I mentioned a pit bull, our family, as we have here, I just want to, we're not making a derogatory statement about the pit bull. Is that a joke, Paul? I would absolutely say it needs to be public investment, and it starts with building our comprehensive economic development plan and goes back to zoning. I mentioned those three instruments, and submitted myself to Mr. Noah's correction, but turns, puds, and pids, tax incrementary investment zones, public utility development zones, public investment development zones. The great thing about those instruments is, we're not actually forgiving, we're lowering taxes to businesses that we're fighting, and we should look at that and consider it as a contest. We're setting the zone up to where there's the difference between general revenue and what's generated in terms of taxes by that part of town that we designate via zoning, a turns, puds, or pids zone. And any tax revenue, any revenue that's generated by the business gets to be pumped back into the improvements, including sidewalks in the zone. And other parts of Texas are doing this with, with great effects. I do think it needs to be public investment, but in the context of smart zoning. I didn't go over that a ton there.
No. Okay. Next question, I think we're all going to start first. What would you do about speeding eighteen-wheelers on Patrick? I assume that means street public access.
Well, that's law enforcement, what else can I say? But yeah, not only speeding, I would say aggressive driving, and I think the law enforcement should be more, even just having a car parked, just at entrance changes everything. Many times at nine feet, police officers standing there, sure enough, everybody always a lot to pass by. So I guess more law enforcement is what is needed. Apart from that, nothing, early education, then people are still going to do it, but there's nothing we can do about speeding unless it's the law that steps in and does something about it. There's no way we can push speed bumps yet, that's just going to be impossible.
Well, as Paul said, it is primarily a law enforcement issue, so if, if there is a season of the year where there's cancer, you know, eighteen-wheelers running down the road for any kind of agricultural reason, I, I wouldn't necessarily want to crack down and throw the book at every single truck driver on that road, because there's a final part of that one, that's my apartment economy. I don't want to see eighteen-wheelers stop by DOT every sixteen feet. I mean, the guy going fast is making them all look bad, especially when it's the heck out, if you're walking down that road. But maybe parking a, parking a squad car near the side of that, or something along that line, then would be a good solution without, because it's not even a good place to pull somebody over, there's no room there. There's eighteen-wheelers, if you can't, if you pull over an eighteen-wheeler, and then you have eighteen-four drive-by, it's a very exciting situation, there's no road for anybody to even go, it's going to block traffic and cause more issues. So I would primarily use more of a common sense approach, just have squad cars, I mean, yes, pull the worst offenders if they're going fifty, but if they're, you know, like I said, it's, it's a huge part of the economy here that I would not want to throw, so I don't want to throw any kind of great ideas of that.
Again, but sidewalks are a good one.
And I'm a trucker, just to clarify that, my dad drove trucks and, or families from Poland in the nineteen eighties, and that was a political decision, go somewhere where there was political freedom and liberty. I'll confess to not seeing clearly what we can explore, the possibility of a couple speed bumps. I think there's a real concern when it's fifty, sixty miles per hour, and we're seeing strays occasionally. And I also think positive incentives work better than negative incentives sometimes. So if it's a question of reaching out to individual trucking companies and checking on policies that they might have internally, we're going to have to do it that anyway, because we reach out to different businesses, cultivate them, and tell them about it's a great place, Dublin is. And so I would sort of, as we continue to reach out, see about their internal policies and reinforce good ones and discourage bad ones.
Patrick?
I used to grab a lot of them, let me go take my, tell us here's five. I don't know, I think it's maybe drugs are on Patrick Street, but I do, you know, blackjack, hour six? Yeah, lots. And, sorry, but I think that's a great example. And the law, not me, not you, the law. And I think that it'd be a good lesson, on Friday night, I would, I would, I would leave, especially with my parents coming to see me. They did go to fire. I'd say I would encounter them on the red line. But then, they got their scooter, okay, they got their, I can do with your ass, you know, but, but anyhow, like, I'm not getting, I'm not aiming at a drug, so I used to grab them. But you gotta get a grab, I think, just for, pretty hard on my heart. And I don't know, that guy, he took me down two blocks of the road, so we were there to get out of there. So we, maybe we should hear, like, draw one back there. You're cheating, you know, I mean, you catch anything, you know, like, that's why, like, you.
But as far as the worst offenders, I think, my last one might come off like it did when I was somewhere, it was the one that was down the road. But having said that, I would caution against extreme use of speed bumps, they are a very practical solution in lots of residential neighborhoods. However, they also come with a very severe drawback of increased the time of emergency response vehicles, and that's
There are no sidewalks. That is again, you can't find the same old type of infrastructure you don't have. So before we plan, mention maybe you should worry about getting the roads done. Make sure we have sidewalks that kids have a better way to go to school and玩. And if I do have sidewalks during bad weather, it's, it's really bad. It's flooded, kids walking there or snow, ice, and it becomes a lot of that, but we still do. Even on some days, I mean, I think kids can slip fall and then right there is traffic next to them. Some sidewalks, especially in areas where kids are more prone to be in, should be a priority. And again, no project should go forward without making new projects. Should be a good one less, but without part of sidewalk on that, in that neighborhood. So if they want to build a new project, make sure they have proper sidewalks, handicapped accessible. And I think that's a very important thing, especially like I said, schools don't are too expensive.
Sidewalks are another one of those real main issues, I think. I'm like, um, just out of grants, I, I'm a reporter, so I don't know. Probably, uh, well, it would seem to me that there's a lot of areas across the school level that would want to move a lot of property. And what I wouldn't want to do, and what I would caution to stay away from, was doing the city ordinance that require in the sidewalk, if you do any renovations on your house, or if you do any landscaping, simply because the house is too close to the curb, it's impractical, or there's some roads ended up, I think, on water tower, or it's a baby. And if you require the residents to pour their sidewalk, contribute to it, or in some way build it, or have taxpayer, maybe that is just an impactful solution. Having said that, I would encourage businesses to have sidewalks, obviously, to have sidewalks, uh, many things, and that's, that's the second part of sidewalks is that currently, the resident is responsible for making between their property and the city road. So essentially, everyone in town is responsible for maintaining city property adjacent to their house. And I can see it's probably cheaper for the city significantly, but it's also kind of like, well, A, some people either, again, they're requiring people to maintain property that is not theirs. Uh, and then there's also the, some people don't want to maintain it. Uh, so there are both these issues with this one side of it.
Just a point, just a point of clarification, I mentioned a pit bull. Our family has a half-dead, I just want to, we're not making a derogatory statement about this. Is that a joke, others? I would absolutely say it needs to be public investment. It starts with building a comprehensive economic development plan and goes back to zoning. I mentioned those three instruments and submitted myself to Mr. Noah's correction, but turns, puds, and pits, tax incrementary investment zones, public utility development zones, public investment development zones, the great thing about those instruments is we're not actually forgiving, we're lowering taxes to businesses that we're fighting. We should look at that and consider that, we could have a contest. We're setting the zone up to where there's the difference between general revenue and what's generated in terms of taxes by that part of town that we designate via zoning, a turns, puds, or pits zone. And then any tax revenue, any revenue that's generated by the business gets to be pumped back into the improvements. Including sidewalks in the zone and other parts of Texas are doing this with, with great effects. I do think it needs to be public investment, but in the context of smart zoning. I didn't go over that subject.
No, not at all. Okay, uh, next question, I think we're all going to start first. What would you do about speeding eighteen-wheelers on Patrick? I assume that means street public access.
Well, that's law enforcement, what else can I say? But yeah, not only speeding, uh, I would say aggressive driving. And I think the law enforcement should be more, even just having a car parked, just at the entrance changes everything. Many times I find I see police officers standing there, sure enough, everybody always walk through their pass by. So I guess more law enforcement is what is needed. Apart from that, nothing really, education, then people are still going to do it. But there's nothing we can do about speeding unless it's the law that steps in and does something about it. There's nobody can push speed bumps yet, that's just going to be impossible.
Well, as long as you said, it is primarily a law enforcement issue, so. If, if there is a season of the year where there's cancer, you might eighteen-wheelers run down that road for any kind of agricultural reason, I, I wouldn't necessarily want to crack down and throw a look at every single truck driver on that road because there's a pile of potter dump on this park, park economy. I don't want to see eighteen-wheelers stop by DOT every sixteen feet. I mean, the guy going fast is making them all look bad, especially when it's scared the heck out of you if you're walking down that road. But I mean, maybe parking a, parking a, uh, squad car in the side of that or something along that line would then, would be a good solution without, because it's not even a good place to pull somebody over. There's no room there, there's eighteen-wheelers and you can't, if you pull over an eighteen-wheeler and then you have eighteen-wheelers drive by, it's a very exciting situation. There's no room for anybody to even go, it's going to block traffic and it costs more issues. So I would primarily use more of a common sense approach, just have squad cars. I mean, yes, pull the worst offenders if they're going fifty, but if they're, you know, like I said, it's a huge part of the economy here that I would not want to throw, so I don't want to throw any kind of great years of that.
Again, but sidewalks are a good time.
And I'm a pro-trucker, just to clarify that, my dad drove trucks and our families from Poland in the nineteen eighties, and that was a political decision to go somewhere where there was political freedom and liberty. I'll confess to not seeing clearly what we couldn't explore, the possibility of a couple of speed bumps. I think there's a real concern when it's fifty, sixty miles per hour and we're seeing strays occasionally. And I also think positive incentives work better than negative incentives sometimes. So if it's a question of reaching out to individual trucking companies and checking on policies that they might have internally, we're going to have to do it that anyway. Reach out to different businesses, cultivate them, tell them about the great place Dublin is. And so I would sort of, as we continue to reach out, see about their internal policies and reinforce good ones and discourage bad ones.
I used to grab them while I drove a lot of the roads. Let me go take my, tell us here's my. I don't know, I think it's maybe drugs are on habits, please, but I do, you know, blackjack, hour six? Yeah, lots. Uh, sorry, but I think that's a great example. And the law, not me, not you, the law. And I think that it'd be a good lesson, on four and five, right? So I don't know, I don't think it's, you know, especially why I always put them on the table. They did go for it. I'd say I would encounter them on the red light. If they want to. But if they got just two, okay, they got, they got, I can deal with your trash, you know, they. But anyhow, like just, I'm not getting, I'm not aimed at that drug. So I used to grab them. But you gotta get a grab, I think it's for power. Pretty hard now. I don't, and I don't know, that guy, he took me down a few blocks before, so we were there. He had a house over there. So we knew, maybe we should hear it. Throw him back there. I mean, he's, he's not hiding, he's waiting. He's catching anything, you know, like. So that's why I like.
But as far as the worst offenders, I agree, it's like, my last one might come off like it didn't matter. Some of them was one fifty miles an hour down the road. But having said that, I would caution against extreme use of speed bumps. They are a very practical solution in a lot of residential neighborhoods. However, they also come with a very severe drawback of increased the time of emergency response vehicles. And that's been shown in a lot of areas, so maybe some temporary ones, just some, just some additional signage that shows your speed. Uh, but I, I would hesitate to, a huge crackdown on a large part of the local economy.
Maybe set cameras, yeah, such as way our signs, you know, just have it.
And I want to, I want to figure, yeah, as you're putting out, the sun's giving us a lot more natural lighting.
Yeah.
Uh, I think there's a good turn to start first, Paul. Uh, would you like to see more tourism in Dublin? How would you rate that?
The, and as tourists, because Dublin, sure, brings great local, uh, local prosperity. I think areas like Frederictsburg, if you take the, or Maxman, or Tannen, or Downe, South, it gives a beautiful town. It's full of wineries. And there are some areas like the vines across the highway, a great spot, a couple museums. Having said that, I mean, until there's more economic, global economic growth, more places to have a seat, I think tourists, I've never seen a local community happy to interact with too many tourists. Uh, like I said, I'm going to go back a little bit to Northern Wyoming, there's a place called Codyland. I've seen that, uh, I think right here, portraying some movies. But there's, there's always, everyone has bumper stickers that say, is it tourist season? I should go, no. You should also, I mean, they do, there are more hotels. Dublin economy is so far not really geared towards a tourism economy. I mean, there's been no museum, but a model company, they don't, they're not dealing with. And that's kind of where it, it stops. So I would say we would primarily focus on local businesses and local infrastructure and making these little houses before, I would say, to, you know, everywhere around the area. Come see the community, you can see, uh, there's really cool, see what they're handling.
One clarification, because an okay problem, that would string in, but I didn't make the clarification. Baltimore's is open, this is not open for tourists, I'm not. Like you, you know, he's doing. Yeah. Okay, over to Bo.
My thought is absolutely, we should absolutely capitalize on the outsized potential that we have as a tourist destination. We have incredible museums downtown, we should say that emphatically. I was just learning the other day about who's signing into visitor logs. And Karen, thanks for pointing this out, that some of our visitors are coming in, not just for the panel, uh, south faces, but they're coming in from West Virginia and Alaska and California. It is an extraordinary asset, and we should, I think, be grateful for the volunteers who are working there. You know, when we do have the kind of rich heritage that characterizes Dublin, and I know you know some of these names, but Tim Shulver's and Tappus, again, that is just a rich past. And it should be addressed in a museum context. We can also capitalize on it as an economic development opportunity by having rodeo events. But the idea somehow, we need to separate these out. And I'm pro development, that's why I keep coming back to, we need a comprehensive economic development plan that rivals ICOs and commissions and outdoes them. We could use all the zoning tools at our disposal apart from what makes Frederictsburg neat, by opinion. I mean, yes, it's the restaurants, yes, it's the shopping, we've got the L B T museum. You've got the World War II museum, that is awesome. And we can do that as we may develop great again.
Like the tourists are going here. You don't be really that familiar with that, don't know, Frank. Everybody I had went over to anywhere, oh man, actually that place where that train held them for twenty minutes. The sadness, I go back and go, it was shocking. Always see that, sign that. Uh, yeah, I remember when Dr. Pepper, my, 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 I think it was big Dr. Pepper company. There was a walkover there, George King. That young person, when they did that, left the town, the windows. Soon, great, great. Now, we got, we got to get back, and my thinking is, if we could clean it up, we get going, that matters, the shop, we do this, uh, and all of it, here and there. Here and there is a great start, get more. Uh. Like, and like you said, maybe we're much easier to beat, you know, like, kind of. I feel that they can do, they can, they just raise their character, they're going to get through there. I think a little more, this makes it be great, it's a little bit faster this way.
I think, uh, by promoting events more in Stevenville, Frankberry, a lot of colleges are there, especially in Stevenville, hotels, you know, we need to focus on them, have flyers there. There's a lot of people come to Stevenville for kids, and then sometimes they have nothing to do. You can tell, hey, come visit Dublin. I think that's a great place to advertise, come visit us, because they're right there. It doesn't take them ten, fifteen minutes to get here. So I think more promoting Dublin, more what we have for visitors when they already here, having that, you know.
You're really good with it.
I just want to make a point today, I'm not anti-tourist, I just don't think any tourists, I wouldn't focus on tourism industry at this stage. Have you done a kind of like a really nice house that you have the kitchen taped off of a plastic wrap for a remote? And that's the kind of stage where we have excellent potential, but we're not necessarily ready as much by guests and owners, like the house to enjoy, we're not, we basically have to work on having things for tourists to see first, you know, and having any, you know, a photo gen area. And then I would want to have a focus on, or at least some focus on some tourism issue. Although the word would be, is it back that one?
Did you want to add something to that?
Just a quick, a five-second one, in fact, I feel so strongly that we should value our museums and build on the tourist potential of Dublin that I would even propose considering a possible restructuring on part of city governments. Stevenville has a department of tourism or a division, as the government is distinctly devoted to tourist outreach. In my opinion, we should consider something like that as well.
Uh, I believe it's your first go. Uh, just a tip. Just trying to get, like, everybody's presenting, I just want to make sure everybody got a chance to do.
Got about ten more, got about ten more.
Oh, okay.
Sound will be gone, sound will be gone a little while.
Oh, I'm not liable for anyone going to say that, so.
Phil, sit down, I have a question, which I did not fill out, I didn't count time.
Oh, there, over there.
Then start writing. My accent is bad, but you guys understand.
Uh, she can get you a card. God, it's okay with that.
I can relax without a lecture.
Okay. How would you manage to lean on the management since the city does not have a clause for it?
Well, thank you for bringing us back to that topic. It's something we're already doing, that our campaign has initiated conversations about. So we met with city manager in Stevenville, Jason King, who's also been really supportive of programs like Town Hall, like Twelton State University, that get students specifically engaged. And we just were very direct with him and said, the cost of moving a broken down home when the owners are ready, out of Dublin to the Stevenville city government, we don't have homes about six thousand dollars. We have anywhere from seventy-five to a hundred homes that are dilapidated. Most of the time, you know, who lives there, sometimes appears out of questions. But over the next five, ten years, we tried to move all those broken down homes out of town. Sorry, when the owners are ready, I agree with you, that, that could be particularly expensive. So we suggested to Jason King, would you be open to cutting us some kind of deal? That is, this is good for Dublin, it's also good for Stevenville. Our communities grow and unify together. He said, absolutely, he's open. And he's reached out to Cameron Gray, in my opinion, he's doing a fantastic job right now. And that conversation is ongoing, so we would absolutely want to facilitate that, I think creatively, outside of the box, and use the contacts we have, wish that it's in the foreword.
Patrick.
Right in your properties? You don't, you don't want to do anything, they're going to make this, they're going to, whether you're talking to multiple scorecards.
I don't want a question, but I was thinking, would they have? I didn't want to question, I was saying, who would have that?
I wouldn't think it's still a thing, possibly, to be auctioning all, on the court, our steps, and act that, things like that. But it will also be possible for, you know, it was very, very difficult. That was my fault. Not necessarily the city's fault. I should not, I could be, I could be wrong.
Yep.
So a lot of these people also sabotage homes, you know, especially if anything, they can reuse the lumber, reuse flooring, stuff like that. And if, you know, you should remind people and give them the first crack, if they're ready to do it. You know, city should go ahead and let them do it. And that way at least we can have some homes taken care of, the rest, uh, option them off, or in the last, you'd have to pay a, you know, nothing else you can do. Because that's one thing we have to do to get the city pulling down.
Well, there's several approaches to explore, uh, when you're dealing with banning or derelict rents or homs on properties. I'm, a lot of them are tempting, but I would, I, I, again, I draw a line between, I don't want to have it too random, local government saying, have, telling the owner, you have to do something with this property. Because a lot of times, the city, America's office can't afford to clean it up. I mean, I, our, my business is, is part of demolition, and it is rather expensive to haul off an entire house. I know some local folks just did it, uh, and it was very expensive just to rent the plumbing and get the dumpsters out there to haul it off. So I think what I would do, uh, to primarily address the problem behind, announce the, the, I mean, there are options like announcing a, uh, uh, unlivable house, uh, tax in the future. Again, I don't love those kind of ideas, because people are probably not involved in that. So what I would probably do is make sure the govern, the local city government's out there, so that folks could come in and invest. And I would make it very easy, and if the city can work out a deal where the city provides, not necessarily money to it, but they could, cover some, they, they could haul off some of the debris, because that is a huge expense. Either a parrot land or a hall, it costs thousands of dollars to get it, you know, started, where there's some dilapidation, that's just kind of sad. So there are those kind of options I would explore, while Tony will not be coming, to approach.
Uh. Um. Your, your first metric, uh, will you advocate for Dublin or do you just intend, or just intend council meetings to check off the box?
I would take the help. No, I'm not going to be just the, yes, I am, or just the no, I am, or this, you know, this, you know, we'll support, that we can say. Uh, no, that, that, like I said, I don't think that's possible. And, uh, yeah, absolutely, that, that, okay. Keep the courage into the fore. It's not a joke.
Uh, that's what. I don't, it's a, we're.
I would agree with that, I think, I mean, that, so yes, if you're going to be city council, you have to advocate for it as well as attending council meetings, but that's, you know, because you have to.
What's that question, James, in, Ben, is it all that?
Will you advocate for Dublin or just intend council meetings to check off the box?
I don't know, I have that, that question, it's a little weird, because like Tom said, it's like, if, if you run for council, or you don't council, that's primarily because you would be very busy, I would want to advocate for Dublin. Dublin is very busy advocating, because as I mentioned before, there's so much potential here, particularly in development, and commercial and industrial specifically, so it, yes, not only would it be like when you do it, instead of just checking the box, I'm not sure whatever reason, other than having a different shape occasionally, you would want to be a council member. I mean, I, I had a discussion with my company's senior, and he's like, well, that's, good luck to you. And he was like, that's, sometimes it can be very thankless, and I'm like, well, obviously you don't do it for fun, or anything fun, but you would do it to primarily advocate for your local community.
Yeah, I'm passionate about advocacy, so I would want to build on the momentum of what I have the opportunity to do. And I think advocacy is political, who are the contacts we have, not just at the city level, but county level, in the state legislature. Been able to invite state legislators to Walton, and I think we should, if it's talking to tech guys, or seeing the kinds of grants we're able to get, we're going to need to advocate, potentially even in Austin. So I think it's, uh, political, I think there's a media strategy, what are the kinds of posts that we're sharing with our friends, maybe it was on the internet, what are the kinds of documentaries that we're supporting? And I do think advocacy is also economic, uh, absolutely, very commercial, industrial, inviting businesses in to do that, and have to be able to make the case, you know, we're at a great location, uh, we have a workforce, we're, you know, we're continuing to invest in our workforce. And so advocacy, I understand, there can't be, as related to all those categories, absolutely. And I, the record, I would say attending this council meetings is, uh, is fun, most of the time, yeah.
All right, uh, okay, let me, just so I make sure I understand, because I got, I got a statement here, so I'll make sure to get it for the question. Uh, we need to help businesses to get started and then bring revenue, and how would you accomplish that?
Yeah, so I'm going to build seventeen thousand square feet, and I, I'm planning on bringing jobs to Dublin. First thing that happens, they double my property tax, because it's in Eretown. So can, can the city council say, hey, this guy's bringing jobs here? You, you penalize him, right away, double the, the property tax what it was a year before. Also, one thing is very important, is sales tax. I want to play fair, and I have two ways I can sell. I make tire pressure monitoring systems for vehicles, okay? I can sell them to a distributor in New Jersey. Do we get any sales tax? No, it's, that's the same. I can sell it directly, it's a little bit more work, but directly to the trucking company in New Jersey. Where does the sales tax come? Right here, you don't. So there should be some incentive for first the company to come here, and then get support from the city council, to tell Eretown not to double the tax. And perhaps there should be some kind of incentive for the businesses to bring in sales tax here. For me, it's the same, if I just sell it to a distributor, or if I do some extra work, but it's huge. We will have several million dollars a year in sales. Within two years.
Okay.
So my question is to the potentially new council members, what can you do to change it? So it's actually nice for the businesses coming? You have good ideas about side jobs and this, everything costs money. You need the money, let me bring in sales tax, but I need your help.
So redirecting, so just, uh, uh, how would you bring incentives to bring businesses coming in?
So like the first article we said, the same thing, is that there's new businesses that are coming in, they're looking for some option by the government. Tax breaks is one of them, you know, first two years, they can start it, maybe two years, three years, whatever the case may be. But then, that is not, that we, as candidates, can actually solve. Because it has to be a meeting that the city council will make, but yes, there has to be some incentive for the new businesses to come to Dublin, and start, get started, whatever that may be, property taxes, or sales tax, whatever the situation, but there has to be something to, in fact, to come to Dublin, to Dublin, somewhere in Stevenville or Frankberry or somewhere else.
Okay.
Well, as far as a lot of the taxes you're facing, as far as, I think a lot of state and Eretown taxes, I mean, we can be with you in spirit, but we have the power over some of those. As far as the council would be able to eventually, I'm glad you're here, I'd like to bring your business here, and I would want to do everything to remove, raise, take back your path. And possibly, and as you, I mean, anybody who wants to bring a large business or a small business here, I would, I would like to maybe offer a startup, to, to remove some sort of, there's a giant, there's a giant, uh, barrier to entry when you start a business, just because the capital, as, as you're finding out right now. Uh, the local guy downtown, the administration, he just, he's trying to his best to be the same, to be the same. He explained this, pull this out, he is tens of thousands of dollars over, just because it's not to remove local stuff, but it's statewide stuff and regulations. But as far as the city council, I, I, I would advocate for you, any other business that wants to come and help Dublin roster, is to, uh, remove a barrier to entry to the best of is legal, uh, at least for a limited subset of time. You said it would take you two years, maybe that can be a good, uh, rule of thumb or initial standard. Okay, a two-year period where you're not subject to local stuff, why don't you build your business? Once it's gone, there, there would have to be something so you could contribute to the local prosperity of the local economy.
Over to both.
Thank you so much for that question. In my opinion, let me start with this, the first thing I would do would be to try to have you involved informally in as many ways as possible, because it's clear to me that you know a lot, and so we need your perspective representative, and we should be reaching out to you. Secondly, my thought is there are a number of concrete things that we could do, and yes, tax abatements, lowering the actual tax that you're paying would be one tool, but I don't necessarily think it's the most important tool. There's talk, and this might involve the state level, this is why it's so important, I think, to leverage contacts to streamline the property tax assessment contestation procedure, the system we have currently in place moves back to the nineteen seventies. A lot of people are unhappy with it. I'd want to fight for you, in back channels, with our lawyers, in any way conceivable. And I'll do you one better, how about drawing a turf zone right around your seventeen thousand feet? Uh, I don't know if the tax income or reinvestment zones are something that's been on your mind, but again, Stevenville has twelve, there's nothing that says you can't draw them primarily around one district. So my answer is, I would fight for you. Thank you for that question.
That answer, uh, there's a many, I, I was going to try and answer, I'm trying to answer his question. Uh, yes, the property taxes, I've been going on quite a bit, and they've been going up. Yes, I would definitely advocate for you, uh, try to get those done, it's like Tom says, they ain't nobody active in the way they, uh, you know, they say, they send me one a day, a little tax appraisal. And I think too many people that are active about it, or don't, they do, because they kind of estimate. And, but that doesn't mean that it's completely hopeless. I mean, you can read the paper on that, that could be an acronym, uh, which is actually not going to seem about that. Yes, so you would have to try to, if you have one, I would.
And then. Yeah. Who, yeah, who wants to be able to learn the last one? Who wants to go first? Okay. All right, how do we get Dublin to support Dublin and not Stevenville?
Yeah, well, I think we, thank you for that, we emphasize taking Dublin very, and we have a unique history in terms of the kinds of sporting events that, that we've had in terms of rodeo. We have a unique potential, Walton approached us, actually, for the first time, not Stevenville. So we should see to differentiate ourselves, and again, we do that economically, through public relations. We ask people who know a lot about economic development to come to Dublin first and, and not Stevenville. Having said that, I think your question is almost somewhat of a double edged sword, because in many ways, what's good for Dublin will be good for Stevenville. And so I agree with the thought that a rising tide lifts all boats, and if we can make the changes in zoning and comprehensive economic development plan that are good for Dublin, that'll be good for Stevenville. If Stevenville continues to grow, that growth is coming our way, we should shape it, we should channel it. But on some level, I think we should recognize that we maintain a distinct priority. We are in this together, and the right policies here, the right policies in Stevenville will help everybody.
That's it.
I would have to stay true, that was the question.
How, how do we get Dublin to support Dublin?
How do we get support for Dublin? Uh. We need some jobs, a few more jobs here that certainly would start. You know, maybe just manufacturing, uh, maybe a park or something, I mentioned a few shops, which were real jobs, hey, they're not too many. Uh, more jobs, certainly are moving in the right direction. Uh, so you're going to, you know, I keep mentioning, you question the people, you're a little ahead of their properties, and, you know, they're often, uh, still wanting to step up the game. Uh. Uh, let's see, back, back to the, to the, we have tourists, we, we can get the building off, keep on that. You know, we said we kind of, transition is all, we keep on the track. Had the right, hey, uh, I think eventually it would certainly do, if we could have a problem, if we go with your business.
I think the mayor and the city council are doing a good job, but what we need to do also is, just like he asked, what can we do to help me? And if we have more options in Dublin, more Dubliners would like to go ahead and support the, so it's, it's cash can we do? The more people we get in, the more businesses are made, more options we have, is to build them to, to support those businesses. But there have to be options, you know, there's only so much in Dublin right now. So by supporting new companies to come in, we can in turn support them, and, you know, it helps us in Dublin as a citizen.
I think a large part of it is building a sense of pride in Dublin, I mean, there's huge sense of pride, uh, right now. We can make it even larger with, uh, making Dublin, whenever we develop areas of Dublin, that contributes to pride in Dublin, because people can drive by, okay, if you go down Black Jack's right now, okay, with Black Jack's coffee, that's a great place. There's Ben, now we're getting dollars, golf in the winter, famous golf in the winter, and more here, and that's great legacy. So it, it kind of shows the two things right there on that drive, that we need to support legacy businesses that people are in, I pride on. And then to pride the people to take in new businesses like Black Jack Coffee, that want to invest in the community, I mean, that place is a packed, celebrating. So encouraging more of that, so that when folks, they don't want to make the fifteen dollar, or fifteen, fifteen minute drive to Walmart, and deal with Walmart people, I'm a Walmart people, but we prefer three dollar world, so I mean, particularly in grocery stores, I mean, I know EG Market Place is in there, Brookshire Brothers is in there, and a couple other places. But like, I wouldn't say move to H G D or something nice that people can stay here, get, get the revenue, and people don't start drinking and drive over there. Uh, restaurants, I mean, granted, this is great, but it's kind of carrying the load of Dublin on shoulders right now, minus Hossian was good, but it was really small, um, I would like to see more restaurants, maybe in downtown, that people can walk around, visit in, and then contribute their prosperity.
I, Steven's second. I want to thank everybody attending, I want to thank candidates for coming down and speaking, offering their, uh, offering their insights. Uh, election day is, uh, May third, early voting starts Tuesday, uh, share this information around, there's on, you go to dublancitizen.com, there's also voters guide with a bunch of information, as well as Q and A with all the contested races. Thank you, everybody, very.